Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Special Council Meeting, City of Gulf Shores, November the third. I'll call the meeting to order and ask the Reverend Larry Wood from St. Andrew by the Sea to leave us with the invocation. Hello, sir.
Thank you so much, Mayor Craft, members of the council. May we bow together in prayer? Our God, today we ask your blessing upon public servants. We thank you for those who have stepped forward to take this community fully to heart, who are here week after week doing the people's business. We ask your blessings upon them for wisdom, patience, patience with all of us, patience with themselves, because we all have such aspirations for this community. We ask your grace as we gather. We pray that this will continue to be a place of civility and friendship and purpose. And we pray for productivity, that this community will continue to move forward and well, that it will improve, that the lives of all ages will be enhanced because of the work of these, your public servants. And we pray that all of us, whether or not we are elected, will look at ourselves as public servants, that we each will take up responsibilities this day, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Toby, call roll, please.
Mr. Garrus?
Here.
Ms. Guthrie?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Dyken?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mayor Craft?
Here. Only item for business in this special meeting is oath of office and swearing in. Judge Holland is here, and if you will lead us forward to this, sir, I believe I'm first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Robert Craft.
I'm Robert Craft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And I will support.
And I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen.
As long as I am a citizen.
Thereof.
thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Not getting here is nervous.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen.
As long as I am a citizen.
Thereof.
thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen.
As long as I am a citizen.
Thereof.
thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am.
As long as I am.
Citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Not getting here is nervous.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Not getting here is nervous.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Not getting here is nervous.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You don't get to kiss her again.
She's the only one that can tell me no, man.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
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 And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. You don't get to kiss her again. She's the only one that can tell me no, man.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Of the office.
On which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to take a group photo.
I will now have the opportunity. I will be being the chairman of the city. Department heads in the city. The sorts of which. Police chief, man. I've been there. Again. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Let's take a group photo.
I will now have the opportunity. I will be being the chairman of the city. Department heads in the city. The sorts of which. Police chief, man. I've been there. Again. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to take a group photo.
I will now have the opportunity. I will be being the chairman of the city. Department heads in the city. The sorts of which. Police chief, man. I've been there. I've been there. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to take a group photo.
I will now have the opportunity. I will be being the chairman of the city. Department heads in the city. The sorts of which. Police chief, man. I've been there. I've been there. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to take a group photo.
I will now have the opportunity. I will be being the chairman of the city. Department heads in the city. The sorts of which. Police chief, man. I've been there. I've been there. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Discharge the position of police chief.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
Of the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. No kiss. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of the chief of police. Chief of. Of Gulf Shores Fire Rescue.
[Laughter]
So the best of you. City King.
I'm supposed to support you.
Raise your hand. I got you. I, Cindy King.
I, Cindy King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of the chief of police. Chief of. Of Gulf Shores Fire Rescue. [Laughter] So the best of you. So the best of you. City King. I, Cindy King.
I, Cindy King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of the chief of police. Chief of. Of Gulf Shores Fire Rescue. [Laughter]
So the best of you. So the best of you. City King.
I'm supposed to support you.
Raise your hand. I got you. I, Cindy King.
I, Cindy King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of the City of. City Treasurer.
Discharge the duties of the position. The City Treasurer.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. I, Toby Watt. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the position of the City of. City Treasurer.
Discharge the duties of the position. The City Treasurer.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
A position I am about to assume.
A position I am about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. I'm Mr. Guthrie. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the position.
Discharge the position.
Of city clerk.
Of city clerk.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
For the City of Gulf Shores.
It outlines how the term, how the items on the agenda will set up, starting with call order through the adjournment. It specifies what orders, what officers of the city are required to attend, which is all department heads and other staff as requested. It sets out how resolutions and ordinances should be introduced and adopted, which is what the council does when they make a motion, second, and the mayor calls for a vote. It also states that the procedures and Robert's rules of orders will be followed in situations that cannot be resolved by rules set out in this ordinance. Basically, it spells out how the, how the meetings and the structure of the council meetings and of the council work session meetings flow. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Toby. That's ordinance 2178.
I move that we suspend rules of procedure that this ordinance may be considered.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Toby, roll call.
Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Ms. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye.
The rules are suspended. We're free to consider ordinance 2178.
Motion to consider ordinance 2178 as written.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adopt this ordinance as presented. Any discussion? Toby?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Ms. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye.
Ordinance 2178 is approved and adopted. That is the final topic of this special meeting. Is there a motion we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We stand adjourned. We have about a five-minute break, and we will reconvene to go over the committee of the whole meeting for this evening. So, thank you for your attendance and appreciate your meeting. You're welcome to hang around, but you don't have to. (laughter) Welcome, everybody, to Gulf Shore City Council Work Session Meeting. Those of you who are new here, this is a meeting where we discuss the agenda for next Monday's council meeting that we'll be voting on. It gives you an opportunity to give us your input, your thoughts, and let us kind of think about that as we get ready to vote on this the following week. Give us a week to kind of consider any situation or any comments made. So, thank you for being here for that. First item on the agenda is councilman discussion period. Mr. Jones?
Just a little bit. Now, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everyone in attendance and thank everyone that's listening. It takes an awful lot of work to get to where we just got, where these mayor and that council are sworn in, and everybody's been reestablished with their positions with the city. As always, voter turnout is very important, and I was very disappointed in the voter participation in Gulf Shores. I think we're better than that. And I want to encourage everyone to especially, we have next May, there's going to be very serious and very important elections as well. Please avail yourself of your right, and more than a right, it is your privilege and I believe your duty to vote. So, please become engaged, involved, educate yourselves, and become involved in the political process because this is your city, this is your municipality, it is your state, it is your county. And I encourage everyone to please, 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 listening and here, to engage yourself, do your homework, and please vote because our voter turnout is embarrassing, and we can do better than that. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. First item on the, next item on the agenda is the Capital Projects Department. Clint, you're going to update us on some of the projects.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, you remember back in May, I presented an application for a TAP grant to install a sidewalk along West Beach Boulevard going from the West Lagoon Avenue split down to 11th Street. And so, the good news is, we were awarded that grant, and so now we have to execute that grant. There we go. And so, this project will include a 10-foot-wide concrete sidewalk slash multi-use path on the north side of West Beach Boulevard detached from the travel lane, and like I said, go from West Lagoon to West 11th Street. And here's a map showing the location. And then, the green there, we had listed as an alternate to install a sidewalk on 11th Street to connect to the walking path on West Lagoon Avenue. And so, that total project cost is estimated to be just over $1 million. The grant will provide $800,000 in funding with a city match of 210, and will be budgeted in '26 and '27. These grants take a while to get all the approvals and everything, so hopefully we can start next year, but it may not actually start construction until '27. But so, staff recommends accepting the grant and allowing the mayor to sign the agreement. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Clint. Council, any questions or comments? Do you mind the audience with any questions or comments on this particular Thank you, Clint. Next, Toby?
Yes, sir. The first one I have is board reappointment and appointments. The first one is to the beautification board, appoint Jennifer Guthrie replacing Gary Sinick as council liaison. The library board, reappointing Philip Harris and appointing Jennifer Guthrie replacing Gary Sinick, and reappointing King Kickler to the Public Education Building Authority. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Toby.
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions? By the audience, any questions, comments? Thanks, Toby.
Yes, sir.
You got another?
I do. The next one for next week will be a resolution to reschedule in advance any council meetings or council work sessions that conflict with the municipal holidays of 2026. And that's it.
Any questions from anybody from Toby on that? Next item, Cindy, you line a credit application?
Yes, sir. We had a line of credit for 9.8 million that expired on October 31st. That was last Friday. That line was with Cadence Bank, and it was at 1.99% interest. It was a five-year line. When the finance committee met on October 15th, they requested that we get quotes from other banks for a new line, and we also got a quote from Cadence. Went out to six area banks that are active with the city, and we had three quotes come back in. The lowest one was South State Bank, which happens to have our operating accounts as well, and they offered the lowest interest rate at 3.89% for five years on a tax-exempt bank-qualified line of credit. And so, with that, there are closing papers in minutes in your package for you to look at. Lee Burchall, our bond counsel, prepared them, and hopefully next week you'll approve the line of credit, and we can have it all established by November 14th, Friday, November 14th.
Thank you, Cindy. Council, anybody questions, comments?
And I forgot to add, it's to be used for emergency purposes only by the Council Finance Committee Directive.
Thank you, Cindy. Scott? Standing in zoning?
Good afternoon. This agenda item is a request for zoning text amendment pertaining to public notices prior to going before the planning commission. Right now, the zoning ordinance has a variety of required notices, and I'll kind of walk through those. One is a newspaper ad at least 15 days prior to the meeting. And just because, well, how newspapers are and how often they run now, we have to get the ads to the papers about four weeks prior to the meeting. So, what happens a lot of times is, we receive an application, and we have to go ahead and advertise in the paper, and then we realize later it wasn't ready, or it needs to be postponed for whatever reason. So, we're in a lot of instances on the planning commission agenda where something has been advertised but not quite ready. So, that kind of messes up our schedule there. Additionally, the, so here's an example on your screen. A recent rezoning request is $490 to run in the newspaper. That is borne by the applicant, but that is a fair amount of money in addition to all the other costs that they have. And lastly on this, the city council, this is different, but the city council in 2012 declared there an absence of the newspaper published within the city limit. So, the council, when adopting ordinances or things, they advertise it differently outside of the newspaper. So, one request is to remove the newspaper requirement. Another current requirement is, we send a certified letter or certified envelope to all property owners within 750 feet, and we actually do this prior to a planning commission meeting and prior to the council meeting. So, today, a certified letter costs $10.44, which is pretty costly, that's per envelope. And just so everyone knows what certified mail is, is basically all of this is a receipt that a letter was sent, and you potentially can search and find out if it was received by the applicant. Doesn't mean it was read, it would just mean it might have been delivered. There's no additional guarantee that it will get sent or faster or anything, it's just really proof that it was sent. So, here's an example from a recent rezoning. You go pull a list of addresses from the tax assessor's office. In this instance, there were 158, they pulled out 37 duplicates, so there's 121 letters to send, and a 1044 stamp, that's almost $1,300, and you had to do that before planning commission and before city council. So, $2,500 just in mailing fees in addition to a $490, so over, over $3,000 in just notification fees to the applicant. We are currently required to post a sign at least 15 days prior to the meeting. There's a picture of the sign. I stuck one on the back wall there, just so you can kind of see it's, I know it's on the ground, it may be hard to see. So, these requirements we have right now before rezoning, so newspaper ad, lots of certified letters and a sign. Our request is to change the zoning ordinance to say that we will follow state code. So, there's the Alabama Open Meetings Act. We have to do that for every meeting, planning commission, board of adjustment, city council. That has to do with notification requirements and other things. And then, the Code of Alabama, Title 11, Chapter 52, deals specifically with planning-related notices. So, the request is to change our ordinance to say we'll follow state law. Our proposal is to, in addition to the minimums dictated by state law, is to offer supplementary notices that gives a little more flexibility. We can, we can do more, we can kind of change as we decide is the most effective way of getting notifications out. So, our proposal is to continue sending mail, but make it first-class mail, just regular first-class mail, and up the radius of that to 1,000 feet from the, from the subject site. We do find that first-class mail seems to be delivered, it doesn't deliver any faster, but it often gets in the hand of the, of the property owners sooner. So, if anyone's received a certified letter, it's, if you're not sitting at home waiting on the mail carrier, you get a notice, and then if you're not there, then you have to go down to the post office and get a copy. So, first-class mail just goes to your mailbox, and you get it. We want to go, well, I just realized I have individual slides for this. So, here's, here's the first-class mail. This is just a graphic kind of showing how many parcels, I just chose a random parcel over here in Gulf Pines, but we're proposing going with 1,000-feet notice radius. Our next request is, we want to, we're planning to go with larger yard signs. So, that one on the back wall is 18 inches by 24 inches. We're wanting to get our standard yard sign to be 24 inches by 36 or two feet by three feet, which is a, which is obviously bigger. Make it a little more legible. That probably, the one right now probably has a little too much information to really be effective when you're driving by. So, we're, we're wanting to make them more, more noticeable. We're toying with the idea of QR codes, so if you really do want to scan it, you can get more information. It'll have a phone number, email address, website, so you can call us, and we can tell you. We also want to go with larger signs, four foot by four foot or maybe even bigger. Those would be utilized, maybe if we had a rezoning or something on the side of Highway 59 or another larger, faster traffic road, that makes it more legible and visible. Our next thing that we've proposed, we've already started, and if Terrence, if you want to click on that link for us, we're producing a map that shows, well, if it works, a map that will show all upcoming development-related agenda items. And we'll have this on our website, so anyone can just open it up and, and see anything that's going before the planning commission, the board of adjustment, or the city council. If you hit Control and click. That's just a screenshot.
Oh, never mind.
Giving you the business. So, so here, here, this is a live map that I don't think we have it linked yet, but it is live available. So, if you see on the screen there, you've got four points. And if Terrence, if you want to just choose one to zoom in on. Keep going until you're pretty close. So, so you can kind of see where, visually, you can see where, if you're interested in your particular neighborhood or anywhere in the city. So, if you click, so click on one of the red polygon. So, if you click on it, you can see here that it's going to the planning commission. This is a final plat going with the planning commission this month on the 18th of November. It's to subdivision lot 25, so that is on the agenda, that's upcoming, it's a final plat. And then, if you wanted to click on that link, it would take you to the agenda center. So, so this is another new means of just being aware of what's, what's coming. So, if you want to, anywhere in the city or just, you know, your local neighborhood, you can click on that. Thank you. We can go back to the PowerPoint. The other tool we're using is, we're posting our draft agendas earlier now. Previously, it was maybe just a day or two before. Now, we are posting them online seven, at least seven days prior. So, Board of Adjustment tomorrow, but that's been out for a week. Last month's planning commission was out for about a week. And I do want to point out for everyone in the audience, everyone watching, if you set a little red square in the upper right, that notify me, that's a very handy tool. It will allow you to add your email address to a list, and whenever an agenda for really anything, city council, planning commission, board of adjustment, anything happens, you'll get an email notification. So, I do encourage the citizens to take advantage of that. We're also, I'll be continuing to work with our communication staff on social media options. Again, we're looking for any way to get notice out to the public. I know social media is a very popular way to get news and other notices, so we're looking at options there. So, the recommendation is, so the planning commission did hear this after October 21st meeting, they voted to recommend. Additionally, the planning commission has already modified their subdivision regs with a very similar change. Staff recommended approval. I do want to remind you that since this is a zoning text amendment, there's some additional state-regulated or state-mandated advertising, so it will not be on next week's agenda, it'll be a later agenda. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Council, any questions, comments? Audience, anybody? Okay, Scott, thank you. Next item on the agenda, you got to change your order, Noel, on the high school.
Good evening, and congratulations. So, on the high school projects, so we're at right now, we're on day 607 of 690 days on this contract. So, we're about 83% complete with the contract, and so we're set to schedule for completion of the high school site around March 11th is when those days end up. So, we're pretty far along in this project. But what we have in front of you now is this change order request number two, and so this is to be able, this is, majority of this work has been completed for the IT and some roadway work, and so we need to have this change order approved to get it to the state, to Division of Construction Management, to be able to formally amend the master contract and approve the change order of $1,555,515. And I'll get a breakdown in just a second, but it's really just to update the schedule of values so the contractor could be able to charge what these line items are. And so, what we have in front of you for change order number two, this is the roadway work on Coastal Gateway. So, the intersection improvements, we had 92,000 for the intersection that wasn't part of the contract, and then the signalization boring, well, we had crews that are out there that was doing some boring work. We had them bore from signal pole to signal pole, so we can go ahead and get ahead of the contractor that's coming to put our signalization in at Coastal Gateway and make your way. And so, then getting to the, and then we also had a, at the Auburn entrance drive, but it's really make-your-way going to the north, that was some paving work that was timing. We were going to cut Auburn off in their driveway, so we would have to got the roadway contractor to pave that portion of the road, so we wouldn't block off Auburn. So, that's that portion of this change order. Now, we get into the low voltage, which is your CAT 6 cabling, all your data cabling throughout the entire site that operates all the doors, just all your security within the site. That's what these other line items are that was omitted and was not in the plans, and so, and so that was not included. So, we're getting this into the contract, we're working with the architect to be able, because it's errors and emissions, so we're just going to work with them on that to make this right on this, this right now. But the contractor is carrying this load, and so we need to, we're asking to approve this contract over this change order, so they can be able to continue on. And so, a lot of this stuff is hinging on getting these, getting these approved, just so they could be able to move forward, just so it wouldn't hold up any of the work. So, they've been a really good partner with us. So, this is, I know it's kind of a little bit grainy, but it's the signalization plan where we did the boring. There is, here where we have the new turn lanes that we put in to be able to work, our traffic engineer, skipper and associates gave us their recommendations after the plans were sent out for the original bid for the site. So, this came after the fact. So, this takes care of the turn lane to be able to go northbound, and an additional safety features to be able to come into the, the site. But that's all I have for right now with this. If you have any questions.
You mentioned some insurance potential?
Yes, sir.
We don't know the outcome of that yet, but what we do know is this amount has been, this work has been performed, and the contractor deserves and needs payment.
Yes, sir.
So, this will be paid to us when we can pay him, and then the potential of getting some type of insurance, errors and omission type of stuff back to us is still out there but unknown.
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood that. Any other councils?
Yeah, just to further that point, I mean, omission section of that itemized cost, about $1.1 million was omissions. So, I think that's a very important concept that we need to pursue aggressively. The work's been done, I agree with Robert, that the, or the mayor, that, you know, the contractor has, in good faith, gone ahead and done this work and deserves to get paid for this work. However, there were issues in regards to the design and omission of these in the initial design, so who's responsible financially for that, I think, is in question, and I know that we're in open discussions and trying to resolve that in a satisfactory manner, so.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, council? Anybody in the audience with any comments, questions? Thank you. That ends the agenda for tonight. Any school update?
Yes, Mayor and council, thank you. Congratulations. We're grateful for the support you've shown to the city school system over all these years, and we hope to continue that relationship with four more. Jennifer, welcome. We have completed our regular season for football. We won over Murphy High School 45 to nothing on Friday, which qualifies as the third seed for the playoffs, and we'll be traveling this Friday to Russell County, four and a half hours away, to compete in the first round. This is the first time ever that Gulf Shores High School football has qualified for the 6A playoffs, so we're very happy about that. Fall sports are, winter sports are heading underway, basketball season's getting ready to start, wrestlers are already practicing, lots of great things going on there. We'll remind everybody that we have our school board meeting this Thursday in the Wave Center for Learning at 1717 East Third Street, and we, we welcome participation there as well. But once again, we're grateful for all you've done and continue to do. Any questions for the schools? We're here.
Thank you. Any questions? Go Dolphins. Anybody here digging on the agenda that has a question or comment, please come forward and introduce yourself, tell us what's on your mind.
I'm Jean Austin, I live on East Second Avenue, and with everything going on with the government, with the SNAP program and so forth, I think that there's a potential for a lot of food minuses in the area. So, I printed off copies of some of the blessing boxes, and I don't know if everybody's aware of what the blessing boxes are. They're areas where you can drop off food for people that need it, or if you need food, you can go and help your you can go and help yourself to the blessing box. I did give Terrence a copy of this, and I have a couple more copies if anybody wants a copy of it. I just think that for those of us that can afford, even if it's an extra can of soup, canned meat, whatever, you can put it in there. The other thing is, if you want to donate money, you can donate to the Christian Service Center for the Food Pantry, or you can drop off refrigerated foods. The blessing boxes are strictly shelf food. They don't have any way to things, keep things cold or hot. But if anybody has any questions for me about it, I'd be happy to answer them, but I have a couple more copies of this if somebody wants them.
You give one to Toby, and then we'll get that posted.
Okay, and I gave, I gave Terrence a copy, too.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Good points. Anybody else?
Lindsey.
Okay, Lindsey.
Just a reminder that following this meeting at Tacky Jack's Gulf Shores, we're going to be doing a special council meet and greet where we'll have hors d'oeuvres, and it's just a good casual atmosphere to come and meet your new city council. So, we hope everybody comes, it's open to the public, it's from 5:30 to 7:00. So, we hope to see y'all there.
Thank you, Lindsey. Anybody else, anything? Appreciate you being here, appreciate your support for this council as we work forward. We appreciate the election process and how it went for everybody, and we got a lot of votes. Like Steve Mett mentioned, we could do more, and we should. But again, it was, it was a great turnout from a standpoint of, thank you for your support for the council. Any other comments from the council? Is our motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
We stand adjourned, headed to Tacky Jack's.